All right, welcome everybody to the April 10, 2019 Regular School Committee Meeting. Our meeting is ordered at 6 o'clock. First item on the agenda is citizens' comments. We have a citizen. Does she have comments?
No, I don't. I'm delighted to be here.
Well, that's a lovely thing for us to hear. Thank you. All right. And then the next item on the agenda is presentation from the students of the Center School, who momentarily assumed we'd leave.
That's correct, yes. They've been outside waiting patiently for us.
What are they going to tell us about?
I think they're going to talk about math and enrichment.
Oh, yes.
Pretty excited about it.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Is he? So, in the meantime, would anyone like to... Oh, here we are. Hello! Come in, please. We're waiting for you.
I should have been.
You should have.
I would have been.
Someone will wait for them to come in, and I'll introduce them.
Please feel free to tell us who you are, sir.
Sure. Thank you. So, obviously Ross Moll, terms, and then it's with the Center School. So, coming in will be our math specialist, Ellie Cowan. So Ellie's been with us for probably, I think, three years. We had an opening of vacancy when I started at Center for Math Specialists, and we went through a series of interviews, and passed, and passed, and we really found probably the best possible candidate for it. So she's been exceptional, and today she's going to bring in some of her students who do enrichment and extension work with her on some mathematical problem solving. So you see sort of some of the other stuff we do at Center besides just literacy. I'm always talking about literacy in front of school committees. So I think they're ready to come in.
We are.
Yes, sir? Come on in.
Where are we standing?
Raise the frontier would be great.
Yep, come on in. Hello, guys. How are you? Thanks for coming to our meeting.
My goodness.
That's a big group.
That's just wonderful.
That's commitment.
All right, so first I'm going to ask my two helpers to hand out a worksheet to the adults that you see around the room. And if you guys can just take one of our handouts, they have the problems we're going to be talking about on them. And while they're doing that, I'll just briefly introduce myself. My name is Ellie Cowan. I am the math specialist at Center School. We're so thrilled to be excited, or to be invited, excuse me, to present here at the school committee meeting. I know the kids have been really looking forward to it. We just want to talk to you guys about some of the work that we do with problem solving in math intervention, which is what I do at Center School. And in particular, things like perseverance and hard work, and as well as communication, collaboration, and all the positive effects of that work. So without further ado, I'm going to let the kids speak.
Math enrichment is an intervention group for students who are doing well in math in their classrooms and really like math. Who would like to work on cool problems for an extra challenge.
Each time we meet, we work on an open-ended problem or activity with multiple solutions. We solve them using different ways than we use in the classrooms. Now, Anna, you will see four of the problems we have worked on this year.
One problem is called the Four Fours. In this problem, we had to get a number using only four fours with any operation in between. For example, when we had to get 16, we could do 4 times 4 minus 4 plus 4 equals 16. This works because 4 times 4 equals 16. 16 minus 4 equals 12, and 12 plus 4 equals 16. So we have our answer. You can try your own Four Fours problem. Another problem is one-dollar words. One-dollar words are if a equals 1, b equals 2, and c equals 3, so on and so on. So, yeah, you write a word, add up the numbers, and try to get the one dollar. An example that is included on your handout is attitude. The letters in attitude, A, E, E, I, T, U, Z, G, add up to one dollar. Consecutive sums is another problem we worked on. Consecutive sums are when you try to get to a particular number by adding consecutive whole numbers. For example, 6 would be 1 plus 2 plus 3. There are some numbers that are impossible to make, such as 2 or 8. Can you figure out which other numbers are impossible? The last problem is 1 billion seconds. In this problem, you try to figure out how many years, days, hours, minutes, and seconds are in 1 billion seconds. The main mathematical strategy we use is one division. For example, all problems require persistence and hard work. We make mistakes, and those help us grow. Problems are too easy, our brains are not working hard enough.
And I'll pause for one second. I just wanted to ask, now that you've seen the four problems, does anyone have a question about any of the four problems that the students presented?
Do you solve the problems collaboratively? Are you sitting by yourselves and trying to figure it out?
So, we either, if we're, we have the choice to either work with partners, which we usually do, or we can try to figure them out on our own. And if we work with partners, we're cooperating, and that helps us grow. Thank you.
I'm really interested in that last problem. How many years are in 1 billion?
Yeah, really, seriously. Who knows the answer?
I know juniors in high school that would not be able to do that problem.
Lily, why don't you walk us through it?
I want to know, I'm just interested in how you strategized a really complex problem and distilled it to something that was successful.
So those words he just used means, "How'd you figure it out?"
Can anyone answer that? Or you can put your thumb up or hand up. Eliana?
So, what we do is we broke it down into a lot of steps, and we divided it into 60 at first because there's 60 minutes, and there's 60 seconds, and a minute. And then we did it again for different amounts of time, and we got the answer.
Very impressive.
It turns out to be a really long time. I like you working out on your own, but it is.
Can't you just tell us?
No. Really. Any other questions? Continue. Alex is going to go, and then we'll come back to Annabelle because Alex is a little bit out of order with the others, okay?
Math skills are not the only skills we practice while working on these problems. Each problem requires a skill set all mathematicians at all levels need to practice. This is the deeper reason we come to math and enrichment, because we need to practice these skills too.
Annabelle, could you read yours again?
Okay. For example, all problems require persistence and hard work. We make mistakes, and those help us grow. If problems are too easy, our brains are not working hard enough.
For every problem, we have to use what we know from other lessons and apply it in new ways. For example, in one-dollar words, we have to use addition to add the numbers that the letters represent. We also use previously learned strategies to do combination to find the sum.
We learned how to explain the reasoning behind a solution. In 1 billion seconds, we had to explain why we divided 1 billion by 60. We needed to know how many minutes were in 1 billion, and 60 seconds are in 1 minute. We did the same for hours. We divide by 60 again because 60 minutes are in 1 hour.
We have to think flexibly. In the Four Fours, we had to use multiple operations and had to switch the operation symbols around to get the right answer. We also had to group different numbers with parentheses.
Perhaps most importantly in math, we always collaborate with our peers, which teaches us the value of teamwork in mathematics. All these skills prepare us for greater success in math in the future.
So, that's it. If you have more questions, feel free to ask.
Does anybody have any questions? Are you scared to ask them? I think we're going to ask the school committee members after you guys leave to figure out the answer, and at the end of the meeting, we'll see who got the right one. I'm serious. I'm totally serious right now. Y'all are going to do it without your phones. Turn them over. Turn them off. You guys were awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I think too, if I could just make a comment, I think a lot of times we focus on literacy around this table, don't we? And this is just a real treat to have the math come in because we focus so much on literacy. So see the work that you are doing, and students, I love your spirit and your sense of collaboration, and you're just really smart, and it's just so cool to watch them work through this and present. You did an amazing job tonight, students. Thank you so much. To your teacher, thank you so much. Principal McQuarren, thank you for all you do. Good, Karen, thanks for bringing them out tonight. This just is such a special thing for us when we have our students present, and we just can't tell you how much it means to us. So thank you so much for taking the time to do this.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Have a great night, and let's hope you have a good day. Yeah. Exactly. All right. Thank you so much for having me. We do not have a student representative report, but I do only have an update for these folks.
Thanks, Karen.
And that is that we have, we have everyone but two people have forwarded their vows to me.
Thank you for calling.
For the superintendent's evaluation, so thank you for that. I'll start working on that probably next week, and we'll get that done in short order.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
I don't think that there's, the only other thing I have is I just want to thank Susan Rudin for her time on the school committee. Tonight is her last meeting with us. Susan, you have been amazing. The work that you shepherded through on the policies was heroic. Over the past three years, you've worked with various folks who've served on the policy subcommittee, but you've always been the lightning rod for it. And just for context, three years ago, when this effort was started, we had more than half of our policies, over 100-something policies, right?
We had 242 policies, and 168 of them had not been reviewed in excess of 10 years.
Yeah. So that's, that's an unfortunate thing because our policies are based on Massachusetts general law. So when our policies are out of date, that means they haven't kept pace with the laws, which means that we're enforcing things that could be challenged. So thank you for all of that. I really appreciate, I know everybody else does here, as well, the work that you've done and the relationships that we've been able to forge. So, thank you so much. Probably going to give me a whole boatload of trouble for that. Moving on, the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you so much. So I think Assistant Superintendent McGuire and I will kind of go back and forth. We'll start with the MCAS because this year sees things a little bit differently in the past, and I know that you've taken the lead in a lot of the work that we've done. So if you can start it off, then it'd be great.
Sure. MCAS is certainly underway in the district. MCAS starts every year at the end of March. For the first time this year, all MCAS assessments will be online, and we're online, particularly at the high school. The high school of 10th graders were the last to participate in the online assessment. With that, we did a tremendous amount of training of our teachers, our administrators, those who were administrating the test, as well as students. Desi offered a variety of practice exams and practice tests for students to take so that they could practice their skills on the Chromebooks, and they could iron out any kinks, et cetera. It was all very, very successful in preparing for these assessments. Like I said, there were several training sessions in navigating this new online format. Kudos to our technology staff and our administrators for a successful start and successful training across the district with the MCAS. Also, all the work we did here with the German exchange and getting that field trip kind of passed and ushered in. Our German exchange students arrived about a week and a half ago. They arrived in Boston. They spent a couple of days in Boston navigating and touring Boston, and arrived here last Monday. Superintendent Clancy and I had a chance to visit with them and their teachers. There are 20 of them in total. They are high school age students. We got a chance to ask them what they were excited about coming here, what they wanted to see, what their objectives were. We got some great answers from, you know, I asked them, what were they excited to eat? And things like lobster, mac and cheese, and barbecue.
This barbecue.
This barbecue thing. So they're going to spend a lot of time in classrooms, shadowing students, as well as living with our families, and they're going to culminate this Friday with a potluck dinner in Holden. And then our students will be traveling over there at the end of June as they reciprocate the transfer.
And it was so fascinating to, other than the foods, and pancakes was the other thing. I couldn't wait to eat pancakes.
Seafood.
And seafood. Lobster, mac and cheese. And mac and cheese alone, that was the other thing. They were really looking forward to eating mac and cheese. And we said, well, are there some changes that you notice right away? Vehicles are so big. Isn't that interesting? There are vehicles. And they said, and this pickup truck. They thought, fascinated with the notion of the pickup truck. And I thought, isn't it interesting? All the things that we just take for granted. And our buildings are flat. Everything is so flat. Like, you know, we said, well, your school compared to our school, oh, it goes right up. So, they were so cute. Oh, my gosh. They were just, they were great kids. Sorry.
Great, yeah, no. Next was, last Friday, the high school held its annual reality fair, which was held on Friday, April 5th, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30. The reality fair is an interactive financial management event that took place for all sophomores. It was sponsored by the Rotary Club. They did a tremendous amount of work in preparing for it, as well as the high school, as well as Clinton Savings Bank. The objective of this is to give students a better understanding of the financial responsibilities that they will face beyond high school and in the real world. What they do is they select a career before the reality fair. They get a paycheck, and they have to maintain a lifestyle within the budget that they are given. All students visited various tables at the fair. They balance their budgets and review their spreadsheets with a credit counselor that's actually there for them. It was a very well-attended day. Several of our school committee members were there, so thank you for coming. And I know that a variety of parents at the high school also put on the lunch for students and the staff too, and the cafeteria. So highly successful reality fair. It was fun to get over there and see all of that in action. And then finally, we have begun work on the district improvement plan. We're currently in the process of planning what will be a new two-year district improvement plan for FY 2020 and FY 2021. Our administrative team, along with representation from multiple stakeholders in various buildings and administration, have been busy attending a lot of professional development sessions around social-emotional learning, literacy, and 21st century learning environments. We have a sharp focus on educating the whole child moving forward, using our current year-long DIP as kind of a starting off point. We attended a workshop a few weeks ago. We got great feedback on our current DIP. We also took kind of a deep dive on where we're at in that DIP, and the accomplishments, and the things that we've completed with that, so that we can move forward for the next two years. We will be rolling that out in June to the school committee, and we'll address the essential areas pertinent to a 21st century education for our students, as well underway.
And I think I want to go back to, for those of us who are a little bit longer term, compared to, comparatively speaking, three years ago, to where we're sitting now with our depth. I feel really, really good about the work that we've done with our district improvement plan. And I just want to go back to revisit something. You said that we got great feedback, but by that you also mean that they were so impressed with our district improvement plan. So that was really, really special to go to a conference like that and have them come back and say, yeah, you're cute, you know, it's all like a template that we, other districts can use. The social-emotional piece, I just want to point out again to some of our longer-term school committee members. We have said all along that as soon as this year was finished, we would be going right into that as a focus. And so this is kind of saying, yes, that's exactly, we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do. And I think the other thing too is just to keep in mind that this plan is intended to be authentic. We've worked really, really hard to make sure that we have an authentic plan going forward. We are doing a two-year plan as opposed to a one-year. Like this year, we're just finishing up a one-year. That's purposeful. We're looking at the two-year because the first year, we want to spend more time helping to square up stuff and train our stuff. Year two will be more of a rollout to students. So that's very purposeful and how we're planning this out. So, thank you, Todd. I appreciate that. Just a couple of quick things. So, we've got the budget brochure and the book are ready to go to print right now. The brochure itself, I just said, this is the draft that's, looks very similar to other years, well, again, last three years, not years before that, but the last three years. And so it's ready to go. It's gone off to publish. We are not going to send these out this year to every single household. That was an incredible expense for us to send it out to every single household. So what we've done now is we've reached out to our three communities, and we will have these available at our town halls, and we're asking our libraries to see if we can have them there as well. And then we're also looking at taking ads to indicate where they can find these. And of course, you can always get them inside of our offices here. With this too, our budget book is also ready to go. It's going to print tomorrow as well, so it's all set. And again, it's falls very similar to our last three years. Every year, we kind of work to refine it a little bit, make it a little bit better. So I feel that even this year, the model that's going out will be a little bit better this year too. So, again, the same kind of thing. It'll be available just as we did last year in our town offices and here, so if anybody wants to get a hold of it. The other thing too is all of this will be online this year. That's just us, yeah. So you'll be able to grab it online too. The last thing I want to mention, though, I know I've mentioned this to our school committee before, and I won't go into any detail, but the note, the whole idea, the notion of the wall of pride that's downstairs. You know, I was saying to some of our earlier school committee members, I kind of choose a wall about every month or so to kind of focus on. We're trying to improve our, improve our digs a little bit along the way. So, you know, and of course, I always have the kid focus. But what I was really aiming for downstairs is that it was truly authentically children. And so that's where the notion came, let's just build these walls with pictures of children. And so all of those pictures are pictures that we had on Twitter, on various accounts throughout the district that we pulled down, and they're down there. And then we're just waiting for the signage. But if you get a chance to get down there, and I know that for those of you who've been there before, you remember it was dark and really depressing and no lights and whatnot. And now, you know, we've got the lights all in there, and those pictures are up, and it just looks beautiful. So I want to thank Pam Sylvester and Todd Sauer, who spent the entire day putting all of those, I mean, they staged them all, and they put them all up. It just looks fabulous. If you haven't seen it, please look down there and take a look at it freely tonight. And that's it for superintendent report.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any questions for Superintendent Clancy, Assistant Superintendent McGuire? Okay. So next, we're going to move into the Florence Sawyer Nature's Classroom trip approval request. And Mr. Bates comes to the table.
Thanks very much for answering a second session of Nature's Classroom requests. Principal O'Shea had presented the MRE request at your last meeting. I would have had it for you at our last meeting, but we realized that in looking at the dates we typically schedule Nature's Classroom, the week leading into Columbus Day, so kids have an extra day to sort of recover from the trip, and realized when we were scheduling it that it also falls during the Om Kippur, so we needed to make sure we moved that. So at the time, he was getting his materials ready, we were still negotiating with Sergeant Center at BU to find alternate dates. So that's why we have 11:12 to 11:15. And as Principal O'Shea said, you know, it's just a terrific trip, we think, for our students. In our case, 7th graders go. 7th graders are, you know, it's that nice transition for us in the middle of the middle school experience. And although our site is different at Sergeant Center in New Hampshire than the, than the Nature's Classroom, the curriculum is essentially the same, it's a challenge-based curriculum, teen building, that kind of thing.
So you could like us?
I'm seeking approval for our students.
Thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions that's in the pocket, the approval request form? Mike?
Hi, Joel. First, the fact that it's early April, and this is slated for November, is refreshing. It feels like a panel of room to work with. I'm wondering if we're going to, if there's a need to include two more chaperones to meet the 10-to-1 chaperone student issue? Is that still in the works, or is that?
It certainly can be if that's contingent upon the approval. I don't feel like we need the extra chaperones in this case. The chaperones with this experience are really helping with the supervision and the wake-up in the morning, the overnights. But during the day, Sergeant Center, Nature's Classroom, has all the counselors, which I think are about a six or seven-to-one.
It's different from like going down to DC.
Right. Understood.
I would say too that I end up there additionally. I can certainly add myself to the form, but.
As long as you're recording.
Many, many times over. I go up one of the nights, and usually it's the Wednesday night, and the counselors take the night off, and I host a trivia game for the sergeant.
Oh, that's so fun. Have you ever been to one of Mr. Bates's trivia games?
From what I understand, this happened before I got into trivia. He stepped back from trivia, so now I'm just waiting for him to get back to the trivia.
School committee trivia.
Oh, call me.
I like your chances. So, I don't think that we need additional staff members there under these circumstances.
Yeah, I'm good with that. You guys good with that? Good question. All right. Then without further ado, Kat, can you make a motion to accept?
Move to approve the Florence Sawyer Grade 7 Field Trip to Nature's Classroom at Sergeant Center on November 12, 2019, through November 15, 2019, for 94 students and eight chaperones.
All right. It is second from Elaine. Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to skip over the student handbook review for the high school. We'll come back to it, if that's okay with all of you. And let's jump down to personnel subcommittee report.
The Personnel Subcommittee continues to work on updating the school committee manual, and I think we've made some really significant improvements. And I think whenever, our next meeting is May, like 1st or 3rd or something like that.
Now it's two weeks from now. Oh, your next meeting.
Ours, yes. But we'll be ready for that meeting in May to present the draft. Yes.
Awesome. All right. Any questions on the handbook? No? All right. I'm going to go through the consent agenda because our next guest has arrived.
We're running early today, so.
I told you we would.
I don't.
We should have done those math problems.
You know? You know?
No, 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 no. I don't do it.
You know. Okay. So then unless there's anything that you folks saw in the minutes of March 27, 2019, or the warrants of April 12, 2019, we should consider those approved. Let's talk about the calendar. I think we do need to talk about the calendar. So it's in the packet, and our next meeting is the 24th, and there's kind of a big old fat agenda for this one, so come ready to settle in. We're going to be doing the social-emotional update, which I know a lot of, we're not going to be doing the social-emotional update.
I talked to Jody this morning. She's not ready.
So can she do it on the 8?
She's, she's going to work with Paul, so I'm going to do it on 8.
Okay. So we would move, I'm so glad we're doing this. That's good. So we would move this over to the 8. We have a whole slew of executive session minutes to review. I think, Lita, you have everything, right?
Yep.
Awesome. And then Pat's going to do a report out from the business manager. Then we're going to talk about late start changes at the school committee. I mean, at the, at the high school. We're going to talk about late start changes here too. Other than that, I think we kind of have to move into the handbook. But before, you know, just so everybody's comfortable with it, did anybody have any questions about what they saw in the revisions? So every year, the handbook needs to be reviewed and approved by the school committee. Did everyone have a chance to go through the revisions? I didn't see anything that concerned me, so I figured we might as well open it up because you may not even need to.
You may not even need to be here.
Right. Is there anything you folks saw that was concerning?
In the school committee manual?
No. It's in the high school handbook. So every year, the handbook needs to be reviewed and approved by the school committee. Did everyone have a chance to go through the revisions? I didn't see anything that concerned me, so I figured we might as well open it up because you may not even need to.
You may not even need to be here.
Right. Is there anything you folks saw that was concerning?
In the school committee manual?
No.
It's in the high school handbook.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm talking right now.
No, I understand the way that it was presented, but it's nice, nice to have like an executive, what do you call it?
Report.
Overview, just highlighting major things. And I think that, I'm not sure the extent to which school committee members are aware that there are things that are in a high school that have to be in a high school handbook by state law. And just moving forward, if we have that information, the laws that have to be in there, the things that have to be in there, and then the things that are particular to our school.
That's a great, I really appreciate you bringing that up because I had mentioned that to Susan earlier. You know, the bottom line is you have policy pieces that have to be in there, but then you also have to have compliance pieces.
Exactly.
And this isn't, again, this is me saying this, but you don't, you don't have to put this out for a million people to decide, should we have this, should we have that? It's pretty, it's pretty prescriptive, you know, in terms of what's got to be in there. So there isn't a lot of wiggle room, quite frankly, to play with it or make changes or what have you. So, and the other thing that I would like you to know too is there was a team that worked with Paul on this. So it wasn't Paul DiDomenico working on his own in isolation, but it was a group of people. But this has nothing to do with unions or this, that. It's got nothing to do with that. So basically, policy and compliance with the state law, that's what drives it.
Mike?
This wasn't a revision, but I looked at the principal's message. The fourth paragraph down says, you and your parents must sign the acknowledgement and even if you fail to sign it, you're still held to the expectations. So I guess my question is, what incentive does a child have to actually get that done? And what does that earn them? Because if they're still going to be held to the same level of standard if they get it in or not, what's the difference?
And that probably would be a more Principal DiDomenico question to ask.
It might be a behavioral thing, right? Like psychologically, you know, if you sign your name to something, you're more likely to show up.
But does it give it any more or less to you that they do or don't submit that acknowledgement? And it's, I think on the surface, it sounds a little bit nitpicky, but I actually don't think that it is. I mean, what, what, what reason would I have to return this if I'm going to be held to this standard anyways?
Sometimes in handbooks and other things that one is asked to sign, there's a statement that says your signature indicates that you have read it, not necessarily that you agree with it. So that is something that you could do. But I think the message, it lets the school know that parents and students have looked at it. And then, you know, when you don't get things back, you know, there are certain people to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
But I don't know, to your question, I don't know if there's something really tangible, like a carrot at the end of the stick that
Is that a concern that you want addressed before you would be able to make a decision on the handbook?
I mean, I don't think that that's a game changer. I'm just, I'm just thinking about that from a student's point of view.
So it's a point, you're looking for just a data point, you're not looking for a decision.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Susan?
So now that you meant, I mean, signing it is acknowledging receipt of the handbook. So that makes, that seems like it's a little more problematic than saying I agree or disagree if they never got it. I know you have to follow the law whether you've seen it or not, but I don't know, maybe that seems a little speaking up.
And there he is.
And we're just jipping here right now.
Hello, Principal Bates. We were very early.
We're very early.
Very early today.
Sorry about that.
So thank you for joining us. And we're just having this discussion and just to kind of, Mike, I'll let you rearticulate your question and then we can tell you what we've been talking about.
Yep, great. So Paul, on the principal's message in the fourth paragraph down, it says that you and your parents must sign the acknowledgement saying that you received the handbook. And then in the subsequent sentence, it says, if you fail to return it, you'll still be held to the expectation. So my question really more, as Lorraine said, sort of like a data point, is what incentive does a child have to return it signed if they're just going to be held to that standard? And what, what tangible data does that give you?
To the first part of the first question, I think there are different incentives depending on the grade of the student. For instance, seniors, when they're going to buy a parking pass, they've got to have that signed. Got to have that passed if they're going to buy a parking pass. For other students, signature of the handbook, it's more challenging to collect them. We're constantly kind of reminding parents, reminding kids. And, you know, it's, there aren't as many incentives as built in as for the seniors. And we were talking about that very thing the other day because, you know, all folks were looking for forms. Our nurses run into it. You know, we're constantly sending out these reminders to folks. And, and the forms are available online. I mean, the idea is that, you know, it's a signature way. So one of the things we talked about doing, and this just came up yesterday, is building the links right into the handbook. Since it's online and there are other links already built into it. That way, if someone's looking at it, oh, boom, I'll just, I'll just go right in there as opposed to, where do I have to find that form? I've seen it, now where do I have to find that form? So I'm not sure about the second question. That's a more open-ended question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm wondering if it can somehow be tied into like a privileged, privileged-based incentive so that the school can sort of cover its own tracks by having, you know, maximizing the number of kids who sign that acknowledgement.
We good?
I just have a more nitpicky question.
Pick away. Sorry, Principal.
No, it's quite all right.
No, I just, it jumped out at me that I was just wondering why it references NCLB instead of like the SISA.
Good catch on that.
I've been looking at this a lot, so it's nice to have some fresh eyes looking at it. That's the, what page?
Page nine?
Nine, yep.
Yep.
It's in bold there, I wonder if that was supposed to be
Swapped out, right?
And then page 10, it's also under the military recruiting piece for.
Yes, good catch too. I didn't see that one.
Anything else? Yes, yes, yes.
It appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Saturday detention is just no longer pending? And I was curious as to why, what was the reason for that?
I think there's several reasons. And in my experience with Saturday detentions over the years, one, it's a funding. I am paying someone to show up every Saturday. And what I started to see with Saturday detentions was you've got to have the right proctor running your Saturday detention so that things that happen there don't escalate into other things. And that can be problematic. I haven't seen it necessarily here because even last year, we didn't have Saturday detention. But in my recent, recently, past years, I started to see an escalation of that, of behaviors that, you know, necessitated further disciplinary actions. But by and large, it's a funding. It's a funding.
Awesome. Okay, Kathy, would you make a motion as amended?
Move to approve the Sherbrooke High School 2019-2020 student handbook as amended.
Hold on, I have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Elise. Any questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you so much.
Thank you for racing over here and away.
And that was a quick one, huh? All right, with that, my friends, we are ready to adjourn into executive session very, very early. So I'm going to ask Kathy to make the motion at 6:30.
Okay. Move to go into executive session at 6:38 p.m. pursuant to national law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Specifically, the litigation matter of George Peking Jr. versus Patricia Maroney, docket number 1885 CV 00643, to include Superintendent Clunchy, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGuire, Business Manager Pat Maroney, and District Counsel Kevin Freitag. And Mike McCarron, also District Counsel. Committee will adjourn in executive session.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to do the roll call. Susan?
Yes.
And Elaine?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Lorraine, yes?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
And Mike? Yes. Thank you, thank you all very much. Appreciate you